What they are.
Racker barrel. Thank you, Racker Barrel.
It's as far as the barrel order of the gas station.
And laying out.
They are stuff.
There's some on spaghetti whether or not.
We're just saying proud.
Well.
He can't even see.
You know.
I always got here.
Where is this?
Those platters probably can start.
Let's see.
Okay, we'll go ahead and call me to work. Comes on. And first thing we do is approve the agenda unless anyone has any amendments.
I've got motion.
Motion to approve the agenda. Question, all those in favor?
Alright.
And then same thing for the consent agenda. Put it in your packet. Okay. You have to respond back. All of them in favor? Alright. Public comments, anybody? Find them, public comments. Move on to reports, mayor's report. Uh, the only thing I want to mention uh is that Dan Schaefer, our uh retired but longtime public works director. Passed away and he was an excellent public servant. Down a lot of young people and he will certainly be missed. Down the officials.
I was just curious if uh the sidewalk lines, the parking lines, are they on a schedule? They're just starting to look kind of.
They're. They're not on any kind of formal schedule, just kind of that is needed to talk. I'll make sure they get that.
That's I don't know, no comment. Yeah, the same thing you mentioned once that we were gonna do that. Side of rock lines. Parking lines. So maybe I'll wait till you give your main report. Okay. Sorry about that, I wanted to, congratulations chief, that's awesome. All I could that sentiment about Dan. Especially that, super funny. Super funny and so I really enjoyed working with them.
Good morning, everyone, um. So Commissioner McPherson and Mayor Nestor and I went to the annual Southwest Region Commission Dinner on Monday and uh they said it was the largest turnout they've had, so there's at least two hundred fifty people there. And it was a great dinner, uh with local leaders uh from our region. Um, and then next, as everyone knows, the municipal elections are approaching in uh November of this year. Um, I think Ben talked about in his last meeting, our last meeting, that he was on the ballot and here is on the ballot uh ballot as well. Um, and I just wanna say that I've uh put my name in for mayor. Um, so I will be on the ballot in November uh running for mayor. I just wanna say thank you to everyone in the community for supporting me as a commissioner and allowing me this opportunity to serve our community. And I look forward to uh to being on the ballot.
Thank you. Brad's on the ballot too.
Oh, alright, yes, and Brad, sorry.
You can't even see him. Okay, that concludes Commissioner's reports. Andrew Porter.
Good morning, yes, congratulations to the police department for um for receiving Law Enforcement Agency of the Year from the North Carolina Police Executives Association. That's awesome news. Um, Jackson County has approved a TDA grant for the Bridge Park Expansion. Expansion and Brain Infrastructure Project. So we've reached out to Equinox to begin preparing the permits and the contract documents for the bid process. We hope this begin construction immediately after the Pottery Festival in November. And Jake and I are participating in the county's feasibility study for the sidewalk along Fairview Road to connect one oh seven with Fairview and Smoky Mountain High School. This is a grant the county received from DOT for the feasibility study. Employment updates, Bernadette begins full time today, congratulations. And Officer Brittany McLean was sworn in on Tuesday. Do y'all have any questions? Okay, thank you.
The face of the department's department report.
Good morning, everybody. Uh, Allen Street project is progressing very, very well. Uh, we're on time, if not a little bit ahead of schedule. Uh, the north wall has been completed, the first few lifts, the south wall are done. Uh, we got sewer line going in, but there's a temporary line to keep from disropping service there. They're also installing more and more permanent line every day as well as stormwater stuff. So that that project's going well even with the rain we had a couple of weeks ago. Been on schedule, uh happy to show anybody around, if you haven't had a chance to go look at how they're doing that, it's very, very cool process. If you wanna go up there, just let me know, I'd like to be able to see what the biggest project in the town of Silver's history looks like. I have completed and submitted the annual pound bill certified statement uh for the year. Uh, that verifies our filings and stuff like that, we haven't added any new roads in twenty-two. So we weren't required to do a new map this year. Um, also currently working with JMT Engineering and SM and E Engineering to update blood modeling for the Fisher Creek Emergency Dam Plan. Uh, they've changed some of the requirements, so we'll be updating that uh to be in compliance. Although if you guys have seen the contract, Paint and Contractor, Paint and Town Hall, that's underway, they're doing a great job dodging traffic with the pool and and everybody else, so that should be done uh midweek, next week, when. Uh, we met with the Pinnacle Park Master Plan Steering Committee, I'm sure David will talk about that and his Pinnacle Park report. Uh, got a good kind of plan of action for forward movement. With that master plan and effectively July first, Alex Plot been promoted to equipment. Equipment mechanic downstairs, ground and shelters has been promoted to senior maintenance tech. You see that running those guys, congratulate them, those well deserved promotions for those two. I'll take questions about painting.
Well, it's just, um, I was thinking that we could possibly put a schedule together for parking. Because the list lot. There's lots of confusion there. And I know we don't own the lot in Exeter, but that that lot is is truly insane.
That's true.
So, I don't know, Mary, did you have a specific place yet or?
Uh, well, near your your home this morning is where I was like, oh man, is it really light? I just noticed as I drove around that a lot of stuff is, you know, very hard to see.
Yeah, we'll we'll get to Ox, good. Did we expend any funds for that blood map thing on Fisher Creek?
Yeah, it'll probably end up costing thirty, thirty-six hundred dollars is the proposal now. Uh, we had, the state didn't send out a notice or anything, we just found out where we submit, because we submit the emergency action plan for the reservoir every year, so they changed, when we submitted it this year, they they sent it back saying that we had to update our modeling. It come out of Fisher Creek.
Just part of the annual twenty thousand weed budget for maintenance of Fisher Creek.
Okay, out of the water quality portion, I guess.
Yeah, we'll we'll pay for it out of the Fisher Creek maintenance line.
I don't think that one specified water quality.
Um, we talked about the um playground equipment on that Bryson Park. Is there any update on that or do we choose somebody to care about?
So you all received those concepts that you liked, um. I've had an intern this summer working on a survey to for residents of what they would like to see at this project. So we could get that out, I'll send that to you to approve before it goes out, but we need to order, Rob, we need to order about six months out. But since they're still staging in that area, we're not able to do that yet.
Do you think the work is gonna be done? I'm saying that.
And we're tracking to be right around the new year, I mean, Christmas probably, if everything stays on track.
What company is that?
I don't recall.
Bliss. Bliss Playground Equipment.
That was the that was the person, but I don't think that was the company.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's a great idea to do a survey of that area. I I really need that. A complete makeover if we have the money. New bathrooms, new building, outdoor kitchen, the works.
Okay. So um as far as uh groundbreaking for the playgrounds, that probably gonna be more in the spring of twenty twenty-four.
So your brick sales will need to start soon. Probably around Christmas.
Okay. Jake, I'm sure this has been discussed, but are we hopeful that the uh Pet Zoo will survive the Allen Street?
I have no doubt that it will.
Okay, any other questions, comments, police department?
Morning, everybody. Uh, sir, just a quick assistance, let you know we've been doing last thirty days at the police department, we worked uh over a hundred, well, we worked about thirty-one traffic accidents, over a hundred traffic stops. We're doing our best as we get our folks radar trained, we're trying to slow down traffic on us, so it's a slow process. Uh, we spent a lot of time when we didn't have officers radar trailing. Uh, and so turnover had a lot of effect on that, as we get a lot more secure, safer with personnel. Now we can get them through the training and get them actually out stopping speeders, so uh help ten different, or ten stranded motors, thirty alarm investigations, fifteen helping welfare checks, six voluntary commitment. Thirty-three fights or disturbances, thirteen domestic related services. Um, we've got uh, we're fully staffed again with the addition of Officer Brittany McLean. She's uh, she comes to us from Hollis Police Department, she's got about ten years of service or so with that department. Not sworn at all. Sorry. She comes to us from Hollis Police Department uh with about ten years' service there and then uh you guys, and most of you met Tanya a while back, Brittany hadn't made the rounds yet to meet you yet, but uh Tanya comes in with about eleven years' experience from Florida, so definitely uh definitely increasing our experience there for the department. So um several of you have been showing lots of interest on in the responder thing, the community care program that we're doing with the police department and I've been one of four chiefs in the state that were selected by the North Carolina School of Government, uh Criminal Justice Innovation, the Department of Rapid Fire Panel. I don't know how I feel about the word rapid fire being in there, that's their words. Uh, panel for the Alternative Responder Project for the state, and so that's gonna be a public webinar, it's on August twenty-second. Trying to get that information out to you, if anybody's interested to see it, sure, at least the Rapid Fire part. Would be, would be good. So we're the only small department represented, uh and that's how it is for us. Uh, that that's really why this program gets so much attention is because there are big departments have budgets for these kinds of things, we don't, and so that's how, that's what makes this one different, that we're doing it without any taxing at all, so. Like I said, it should be entertaining, nothing else, the Fourth of July uh fireworks, we didn't have any public safety related issues with that, that went well. Big thank you to Jake and the fire departments for helping us out with that. Uh, lots of folks, lots of people crammed crammed in and crammed into town for a while, so. Um, back to community care just for a minute, uh we're experiencing it sort of ebbs and flows with our homeless population, that's probably the number one topic that I hear about from people and uh so that's what I'm talking about today is we, community care has helped a lot, and so the the calls for service that we get that are most likely homeless related, a lot of them are like removed persons, like somebody somewhere and they want them to leave, and so they call us and they have them leave. Um, another one is a welfare check, there's somebody sleeping beside a building or something, people will make sure they're okay, that kind of thing. We've seen since Galadriel started full time, we've seen that that call for service decrease as much as forty percent. And right now we're sitting at about twenty, twenty-five percent decrease, so it's definitely having an effect on these interactions between our officers and and the homeless population and and it's definitely changing the tone of those interactions, which is to me really more important. Uh, so instead of, it's a helpful thing, uh it's like, hey, Galadriel, that's why I have her here today, she has, her work, eh you just can't believe all the things that she's doing, and as a matter of fact, yesterday she was in a basically a hazmat suit helping somebody with something that probably isn't really necessarily something she had to do, but she chose to do it, and so uh that people don't forget those kinds of things, and it's really making a difference in our police response in our town, uh so it's making people's lives better, so. We do an industry of survey. At the end of every shift, officer that worked the shift, twelve hour shift. It's a social issue kind of survey and it's it's kind of subjective, but it's better than anything that I've seen anywhere else. Basically what they do is they say, we got called to a situation that involved this social issue this many times today, not proactive work, what they get called to. And so uh during the same time, the ransom numbers report meeting, it looks like our uh we're down about probably twenty percent reduction in our officers' daily shift dealing with homelessness and substance abuse is down as well, so that they're dealing with. So mental illness still stays about the same or or maybe even a little bit higher. But that's uh for our officers, that's a daily thing, I mean, they're gonna deal with those issues every single day in southern former fashion, so anyway. The other one, acknowledge the award, um we're completely humbled and and excited to get that award for for the whole state, I think it's four hundred fifty police departments or so in the state. So for a small town department to get selected for that, it's amazing. And uh the staff, like I said, Galadriel, I've already touched on her, I made her come somewhere, I'm just sure, something else, but but uh a lot of kudos go to her, but the thing is, without our officers accepting the program and willingly seeing the value of it and and creating the support for Galadriel, she could be fighting a hard battle on her own and we'd get near the results, so it's our entire staff, it's not just electric. But Galadriel is doing amazing. Any questions?
No. Thank you very much, congratulations on the award and for getting on the with the fire department.
Good morning, we continue to be busy, we're running averaging over a hundred calls a month, we're up to seven hundred and eighty-five right now, I think uh we run a probably about eight overdoses, twenty-one wrecks, four structure fires. And uh one vehicle fire, so then we got a new employee coming in on with us sometime during the next month. And uh we're looking forward to that. Bye.
Thank you.
I don't know if I can circle back. Um, so someone reached out um about seeing a safe haven box in in the region. And now that we have a, you guys know a safe haven box, it's where um people can drop off uh but surrender a child, a newborn. It's a safe place for them, so usually they're at police stations or fire departments or something like that. Um, but they had mentioned that they would love to see one of those in our region because we don't have one here, like a a a not drop off spot for someone to to leave a newborn if they're not able to care for them or not willing to. Um, and now that we have a fully staffed paid fire department, someone's al- always at that building. Um, this person was wondering if we could get it on the agenda for them to kind of come present what that program would look like. That's something that we're interested in maybe having at Silver. Um, so is that something that the board would be willing to have this person come speak about?
Sure. You wanna reach out to them?
Yeah, um, so they just need to reach out to page.
Just give them our emails and we'll take care of this, okay, awesome, babe.
Yeah, okay. Anything else on fire department?
David and I enjoyed the fire department center last Monday, thank you for hosting us, it's really nice.
All right, move on to main street report.
Good morning, um our core outdoor economy groups have finished and Silver now has a five-year plan with top priorities of completing the Bridge Park Expansion Project, which includes access to uh Scotts Creek and the recreation components as that's cleaned up. That we'll be able to to flow through there and um helping move the needle forward with the Pinnacle Park Expansion. Um, as well as planning a gear builder retailer expo for twenty twenty-four at Bridge Park. And recruiting complimentary outdoor retailers and outdoor experience businesses that are hosted indoors, like a rock climbing gym and those type of things, so we're really excited about our involvement to kind of help and and the next phase is to um roll that into the Building Outdoor Communities Program. Um, in the regional level, they'll be working on things like additional funding in ways that they could get involved in those projects to make them happen. So really excited about that. Um, as far as the co-working feasibility study, we had an in-person status meeting uh with the four analysts and the program manager with NC Growth. Um, representatives from Western Carolina University's Economic Development Department and Engineering College joined us as well. Uh, to discuss their needs, should we incorporate an incubator into that process? And we have a a meeting set up for mid-August with the uh the Investors of Patch, uh which is the co-working incubator space in Asheville to see if they have an appetite in doing something in the West, uh which they've expressed that they do have interest in. And so Silver would be the place that we would focus on having this particular um uh program, so I'll keep you updated as as things progress. Concerts on the Creek are going great, um we had a a great Fourth of July uh celebration despite the crazy weather and all the things that were happening, we had large crowds there. Um, so thank you so much to the Public Works and Police for in the chamber for making that happen. Uh, this Saturday, we have the downtown Harry Potter birthday celebration, we're super excited about that. Merchants are decorating, creating themed specials, that sort of thing, we'll have a costume contest at Hogwarts, which is uh at the Paper Mill. Um, a sidewalk parade, so there won't be any road closures or anything like that. And uh kids activities hosted at at uh Platform Nine and Three Quarters, which is Fusion Spa. Um, gifts for Harry Potter will be collected at Hogwarts in the form of donations to Jackson County Public Schools for school supplies. And next week I'll be at the North Carolina Main Street Directors Meeting in Elkton, so I'm looking forward to learning and networking to bring good ideas to Silver from other Main Street towns. You guys have any questions? Thank you very much.
Possible board report, uh not much to report on, we are reviewing some policies uh based on customer feedback and administration um feedback, so one of those would be the cross connection ordinance, um that will impact commercial customers, but it will, it will like clarify a lot of things and make it make complying with those regulations easier for our customers, commercial customers, and easier for administration uh to administer those ordinances. That's all I really have there, uh unless there's any questions on cross board report. For the general, okay, Pinnacle Park report. Uh Jake, you mentioned the steering committee. Uh, that this is the steering committee to guide the um setting the schedule and the development of the master plan for the park. Uh, and it's made up of numerous stakeholders from the town, county, uh Pinnacle Park Board, Western. Um, and so that's been kicked off and one of the first tasks of the master plan will be a recreational need survey. And they, we will be responsible for distributing that. Uh, at least to uh all of the town Silver residents, so shipping costs, I guess, would be something to the mail cost would be something to consider on that one. So they'll prepare the survey and tell us who we need to distribute it to, but I'm thinking, I'm pretty sure one of the demographics will be the entire town residents, in order to get a certain percentage to respond. Um, I think August eleventh is the, when they wanted to have the survey done by to give it to us to distribute. I've seen reasonable, anything I need to let them know about regarding that? How difficult is that gonna be to mail to everybody?
That's the same, that's the same. You're gonna do it in the same, you're gonna do it in the same outlet? Let's talk about it, we'll get back to you.
Okay, you can go out and text. All right. Um, that's all I have for Pinnacle Park report, though. Questions? Okay. Blue is reports and move on to new business. First thing is the skate park discussion. And you might wanna leave this one off? I guess, I guess so, um. So it's open, um, it's uh not quite sure if that half pipe is gonna make it. Or I don't know, I'm not quite sure. Um, so I guess we sort of need to make a decision as to whether we wanna move forward with developing that space. Um, I think that would most likely be amenable to that. Um, but we need to think about, um I think it's an awesome space and I think it's a, got a lot of potential. Um. But um, I need to know how how much, how much energy I should spend on it, um if we want if we wanna wait on the county, um Mary. Um, I understand that you haven't had much luck with.
I've been kind of disappointed, honestly, uh I think that we have a really great space at Mark Watson Park that's underutilized, and I think um is a recreation park. And that would be a asset to address all the demographics of the recreational sector. And I wish that the county commissioners would be a little bit more amenable to thinking about space near the batting cage and where the metal garages are that do not fit the characters of Mark Watson Park, so not I'm just having that conversation, I hope that they will open their minds to the concept. Um, and so I I think that that's more of a permanent location spot. And I have a little bit of reservations about investing too much in a private business owner's spot. I'm curious if you have any numbers or any uh statistics on how much this rapid's currently being used.
So um what I do know are ballpark estimates, uh I know that the the asphalt, to finish the asphalt down to the to the concrete pads would be ten thousand dollars, at least ten, twelve thousand dollars. Um, there's um twelve hundred square feet of probably a three-inch pad that we would need to pour. We could work that out, like that. That's something that um we'd have to reach out to contractor to find out how much of a cost, there's three little knee walls that I I don't know, volumetrically I could give you the dimensions of those. There, but I would say thousand dollars. No, we also have to do the demo, not those pillars out, so. Um.
Can you expand a little bit on what you were about to say about the half pipe?
Well, the half pipe, um I think it's gonna last for a few seasons, I um and I do see people skating on it, um. Uh, routine maintenance, I think uh the the cobay needs to be secured every once in a while, we need to go down there with the drill and just you know, make sure everything's just sort of tightened down. Um. And a fresh coat of paint most likely before uh turn. Whether it be that skate paint that we bought or whether we do poly this time.
I've not been particularly impressed with the commercially available skate paint, that's a a product out of California where the humidity is not the concern that it is here. I think of a different commercial sealers probably will do in the future.
Yeah, so we can talk about that, but um I can see it lasting at least three years, but you know, that but that would be really much.
I think this lasts like ten years or something.
Yeah, five-year.
Five-year.
Five to ten-year lifespan in California, you know, or.
Maybe you need to check with some places around here that have those temporary ones, I I know there's some around the Boone area that use, have used that company, maybe see what they're sealing it with. And and how their maintenance is on it.
I mean, my advice for where to put our energy would be into getting the county to to put a permanent one at Mark Watson, I mean, the whole point of this half pipe was a temporary hole over while they got that one planned and built. Um, and I would really like to stay on that course as opposed to investing more money and time maintenance into um a temporary one that was never really meant to be permanent. Um, because even if the county completely fails to build the skate park, this thing is still not, it's still only gonna be temporary, right, so. Well, unless we, unless we do the concrete, you know, so it it's really nice to have a space right in town, so you don't really have to deal with traffic to get out to Mark Watson, you know, it's really nice, it's a really nice space right by the creek. Isolated. Right, but if we, if we were, if we had originally set out to build something permanent, we would not have done it right there on someone else's property. Right, that's a, that would be a bad long-term planning, it's a good spot for short-term solution, but it's really not a good long-term solution to the lack of the skating park, I really think we should put our um efforts in working at the town still.
Let's say that the metal garages are are a no-go, they're not gonna get moved. Does anyone know how much of the land behind that or the baseball cages behind that is part of the county property? I know it's kind of swampy back there, but I'm just curious if there's rooms that still have a women in the boat. And I think it goes up to Savannah Drive, and that's a pretty decent lot size, I mean, when I take pictures looking down, it looks like there's room to have it all.
So, so what would it take to revitalize those talks with the county?
Um, I guess I just need to attend the meeting, I I've communicated by email with some commissioners um off and on for about a year now. Just to be honest, I'm not, I don't have a lot of availability and I haven't been able to attend meetings with counties.
I wonder if maybe just meeting with Dawn would be better than meeting this. And if you could arrange it around your schedule where I could.
Did we have, did we have any planning going on for that?
Paige Rusty and I met several times.
But no, no concept designs or not, not a place. So.
It was centered on the location.
Yes. So we could get to a point where it's a year from now. And maybe we have some construction documents. We're looking for funding and et cetera. Maybe the half pipe is still surviving, hopefully. So. What if it's falling out? You know, we don't randomly end up with that escape park. We end up without that, without that outdoor space.
I think that we have a win right now of having something, which is more than we've ever had.
I guess I would argue that. I would, I would like to, to keep going with that.
Do we know if the owner would sign like a temporary lease or like a ten-year?
We have the lease.
Okay, how long is that?
It's a year-to-year lease right now because we are going to see how the skate park went.
Yeah. It's zero.
And I add, and Eric can probably speak to this too. At least currently either party can opt out of. At any time because the structures are temporary. If you put permanent structures in there, then that leads needs to be reevaluated.
Well, we definitely have to. If it's in rural, by the way, fight. Yeah, so the permanent structures are tough.
And permanent structures in a flood plain are also tough. We didn't have to get permitting because they were temporary structures. It's not going to hurt a, a concrete slab to be underwater, but permitting in a flood plain gets a lot more complex.
Yeah, it's really not a long-term spot. And then like, and what money are we bargaining for this? I mean, I don't want to use ARP funds because we're still looking. We still haven't put out the bridge part to bid, right? I mean, all we have is construction estimates from. When Equinox updated it, what, last year, two years ago?
That was, that was January of.
It was January of this year because we were applying for the downtown.
That's very interesting, but we don't know what bid will come back at.
Right.
And we don't know how Allen Street will go. Like right now, we're within budget, but.
That's a good question. Have y'all seen the skate park builder in Franklin? In Main Street? Would the park you might build, Ben Watson, be similar to that one? Do you, do, do we have any concept of that whatsoever?
So I saw that about six weeks ago and they were just starting. You can just kind of see where they were. Showing where the ramps would be. I thought it was very neat.
Okay. You're asking it's a scope that Mark Watson Skate Park would be similar?
Well, and the cost. I mean, if, if we're talking similar parks, we're probably talking maybe similar cost plus twenty percent now. If they, they approved funding last year.
What did, what did it cost?
You know, I don't remember if I, I want to say sixty-eight thousand dollars or something like that, but that could be way off by it.
Yeah, I don't think so.
Or we, they're still working on trying to put in the bathroom because they have this big open space. That's where they also have the bridge part, because they don't have a bathroom.
But how do you get some numbers for my department skate park event space?
Yeah, I, I just got some rough numbers. Bello was on the really high end. It's just, you know. Having concrete and the engineering to do it is pretty high, really concrete and asphalt.
So I mean, you know, part of the discussion, the bargain, I felt like was that we would set up a temporary skate park. And the county would begin talks of investing in an actual one. And I feel like we fell, fell hard into the bargains. I think maybe we should try and revitalize those talks with the county and I'd be glad to help with that. And, and maybe, you know, we could consider if, you know, I'm not committing to it, but you know, say Bridge Park costs. Come out in our favor as do the Allen Street repairs. And we do have extra ARP funds. You know, we could help contribute, but that would be a much later discussion. But anything that could encourage the county to. At least move forward with the concept plan, it would be helpful. At the very least, I think we just start talking with them again. And I'll be glad, I know you're, you're busy. I'd be glad to.
I mean, after, after Labor Day.
So can we maintain what we have there at the park for now and see where these talks with the county go before we last morning? Give it a few months of trying to push the county and see what their, their sources.
Yeah, I understand the permitting issue and, and all that. But really, there's already a hat there. So. I'm, I'm looking for quick cheap fixes that are right in town and also looking for outdoor spaces. And this is a perfect space. It's perfect. Maybe we just do some more asphalt down so that we can at least use the quarter pipe that's there. So smooth it over. As far as where the money comes from, this is a miniscule amount, I think, compared to what it's going to take to, to build a real, a real park. So.
And time, though, during Bridge Park.
My caution to the board about the money would be, we have Allen Street, Bryson Park, the bathroom and Bridge Park. All that will be going on before December, hopefully. So that's more projects than we've ever had at one time. We're also looking at a dwindling tax base because of the one oh seven project. And then the work that will happen with Central Park. So we're. We, the only real funds that I see that we have is ARPA funds. But with like four hundred something thousand remaining of those, we've got all these projects going on, are about to go on. So I cautioned the board about taking on any, any more bait expenses right now.
Well, I've, I've been approached by, by a few folks who would be willing to donate to their project. So. If I could find out how much it would cost an asphalt to just cover a small, down to, from the road down. Then take a little bit of that space that we can put the rails in and put the quarter pipe at the end of.
So we have the art fund. Do we have a skateboard fund or can't we?
Well, we have the SADC raised a thousand dollars. Got a big check. I think that's in a fund. So. So I've been approached by a few people that would like to see more of what's going on down there. So I will reach out to. If I could get a better estimate, maybe we could go down there and get the road to go down and.
I mean, could you estimate, who, who are you talking about? You have a town approved to asphalt or, or contract it now?
No, he knows not to.
I don't know if you can do it.
No, we wouldn't do that. That's not the kind of payment that we do. We're not going to have the equipment to, to do. We're mostly patchers as far as our asphalt goes. Just based on prices that I get for road repairs. Anywhere between, I'd say thirty thousand, probably to do what Greg's talking about. But I would need to. Do a little bit more due diligence on that as well.
It's a number. I mean, I can, all I can do is reach out.
All right. So I guess for now, we're not asking for any planning or any thing from town staff. We'll reach out to the county. We'll talk offline about how best to re-indigrate those talks and then you could use your resources.
And I took some pictures. I'll send you guys here in just a second of this space. I'd be happy to help you guys. If you already talked to Chairman Lutz.
Anything else there on that discussion? Shall we conclude it? Thanks for acknowledging us. A part discussion disclosed. Moving on to planning board appointment. Okay, in your packet, you had three applications, which is, uh. Which is very exciting because we've had trouble in the past getting enough people to apply for this position. And now we have three. And, and they're all very good applicants. So we'll open up discussion or nominations for the planning board appointment that we have.
Well, one, one applicant who stood out to me is probably good mind, Allison Joseph from Western. And she's a highly respected. She was a leader of the staff senate. So I would probably like to help Allison Joseph for that, for that place.
Nomination for Allison, any discussion? Okay. All those in favor of appointing Allison Joseph to the planning board?
I.
Not opposed. All right. That's easy. We have a new planning board member. Congratulations. And that leaves us determined. Ben's not here to do it. So.
Make a motion that we adjourn.
All right. I'll look there. Hey, we are adjourned. Thanks, everybody.
Get us in this to all of you right now. So don't forget to do it. So.
Yeah, well, it's already in your mind.
No, I mean, it's in my head.